It's Monday, March fourteenth, four P. M., and I'd like to welcome everybody to our study session. Start with public comments. Do we have any public comments?
None today.
All right, thank you. There's a song of items to be placed on the regular city commission agenda, which is the minutes from February twenty eighth study session. Commissioners, are you okay with moving that on to the regular agenda? All right, sounds good. All right, well, item one is the update on the Luther Coke project, which John Cohen and Calantis will come up and update us on that. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners.
We'll write it here. Well, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. City Manager, Cal and I are here today to continue the discussion about the Luther Coke memorial that we've discussed with you at least on one occasion, but the community discussion continues. And I just want to mention, I don't think I need to introduce Sheri, but Sheri Lunder, Office Manager, is here, and she's probably done the most work on this, so she's available for questions. So after we kind of announced it and put it out on our social media with really not too much fanfare, we have received twenty-one donors who have donated a thousand sixty dollars, which is, I would say, a pretty good response, because we haven't really pushed it that much. We just kind of did that one time, and that was just the general round of community support that was generated from very minimal advertising or promotion. But in addition to that, we've had some people that have become upset. I, and I use that word, some people have contacted me. I have had over fifteen contacts, some of them chamber members, some of them not. I'll let Cal speak for his organization in just a minute. Some of them have been chamber members and some of them, some of them have not. Some of them, they've all been downtown businessmen or associated with the chamber in one way or another. Some are more upset than others about this. Some are concerned that we're on a, somebody like Luther, but yet we failed to recognize other city leaders that have come and gone, such as Ed Haley, who the park was named after, Haley Park, which is in the vicinity. We're not setting it in Haley Park, but in that vicinity is where we want to put this bench. And people like, well, also mentioned several times was former city commissioner from Ramsey. Yeah, so, and now I'm still blanking on his first name. Jean, wow. So Jean Ramsey and Ed Haley have been the two that have specifically been mentioned at various times. I should mention, too, that several of you have contacted me and made your opinions known. And I also want to say that because we had some controversy and because this is something in the chamber, we did have a good discussion about it at our last chamber board meeting. And Mike Skidmore was president or was representing the city commission there and was present during that discussion. So he heard that as well. And so we're back to you mainly because we want to make sure, one, we understand protocol completely. And if we raise the money for this bench that we have been talking about, does that automatically place it, or then does it come back to the city to be received and accepted and officially designated for placement? We just want to make sure that, one, we've got your complete support of what we're doing before we move forward. So there was a lot of discussion, and Cal was present at that meeting, too. So he heard that discussion, too. There was a lot of discussion that maybe we should make it more of a designation or more of a statement for, of our community and recognizing people that kind of get slipped through, that slip through the cracks or socially marginalized, either through developmentally or mental handicaps or because they're homeless and indigent, and kind of make it a overall dedication. And maybe that we could continue to somehow just recognize Luther by just putting his name on the bench, without too much more than that. There's some that would like to continue with everything that we started, which was the memorial stone commemorating Luther and talking about it just slightly on that stone. I mean, as many words as you can put on it. I mean, you're basically down to a tweet at that point, but what you could say on that. And there's others that would like to just abandon the project altogether. I will say that several have claimed sexual abuse and attempted rape by Luther. Several females have reached out with that statement. I'm not going to name anybody's name, but I just think that we need to be cognizant and aware of that. And I have also talked with Police Chief Adam Wine Gardner, and I don't think he'd mind me saying his name, just because I think he would be more than willing to come up here and say this. His department has dealt with Luther as much as anybody has down through the years, and they recognize that he's done or made a lot of egregious or flagrant public acts that would be deemed very bad, but that they always recognize that he was a person that just didn't have a mental capacity to make right choices or even understand exactly. I want to say that this is very important to Sheri, who's on my staff, and I had mentioned she worked on it. To her, she did a great job of taking care of Luther. He came in almost on a daily basis. And in fact, when he missed a full week, that was when we reached out to the fire or the police department, and Adam said they would go check on the family. We did that simply because we're so used to seeing him, and when he didn't show up, we became concerned. But anyway, Sheri did a great job of championing him, of helping him to just navigate some things. She would constantly remind him that, you know, today you need to take a bath when you get home, and today you need to do this. And we'd talk with him about where, how much money he had, and where he could get lunch. And so Luther could be reasoned with. He could be talked with. He always was very friendly to everybody in our office and always recognized us on the street. He knew us by our cars, in fact. When we were driving anyplace in town, he would recognize us. But we also understand that our experience wasn't the same as everybody's experience. And because this is a public venue, because it's going to be on city property, and to make sure that you understand exactly the property, what we're proposing is the bench that sits just immediately to the west of Haley Square. There's a bench there currently. You move, and this bench replaced that bench with a nicer bench than what's there now. So with that being said, I will let Cal speak for his organization and additionally be able to respond to any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you, John. A couple of things I want to do is fill in a couple of gaps, because I guess maybe John wasn't aware of all the, all that's gone on with this. We started out, when Luther was absent from downtown, we started receiving calls asking if we knew what the status was. Over the course of the week or two, we had a post that said he was ill, and we had another post that said he had passed. And then we had a couple of people in the community reach out to us, downtown businesspeople, saying, is there something that we can do to commemorate Luther as being a part of our downtown? And so we had actually had a family member reach out to us that wanted to just get a simple plaque and put it on the back of a bench. That's, that's what, as a member of the family, that they wanted to do. But the chamber reached out to the Main Street because they heard about that and said, you know, let's do something more. And so we got to, we got to visiting, and first stop was with Richard, and we talked a little bit about it. And at that time, he mentioned that a city commissioner had suggested that maybe we do a buddy bench. I'd never heard of a buddy bench, but that a city commissioner suggested that maybe we do a buddy bench somewhere in the downtown. And so we started working on that, and how would we, how would we recognize Luther in the community? And we thought, well, maybe we would put a stone or some type of bronze plaque or something in the vicinity of the bench. We then came back, Sheri and I did, came back and met with Richard and discussed what we wanted to do and asked how, what the plan was, what we should do to go forward. We still had not made any mention to the public of what we were going to do. Richard suggested that we get with Director of, he has so many titles. I'm just going to say Dennis Tharp. We get with Dennis, and we get with the street superintendent and talk about what it was we wanted to do. So we met with them at the chamber office and walked over and actually visited the site where we wanted to put it, told them what we were suggesting that we do, and they, I guess, signed off of it. It's not the correct word, but they said we could do what we wanted to do, where we wanted to do it, and the city would participate in the installation. So that was all, that was all already laid out and, and gone over by the city staff. And then we came to you and said, this is what we've planned. This is what we've done. If you don't have any objections, we'll start trying to raise funds for that. And at that time, there were no objections to that. We have since put it on our Facebook page. I think John shared our Main Street post. Or we have a much larger following on our Main Street post, because we've just been there longer. And so we shared, put it on our Main Street page, and John shared it to his chamber page. And just, I just looked at the analytics a few minutes ago. We've had two hundred and forty-three likes or loves on that post. We've had twenty-five positive comments, no negative comments. But probably the more important thing of those two hundred and forty-three likes, we've four hundred, one hundred and four people that have liked it have also shared it to their personal page. They have had no negative comments. Because we've shared it a hundred and four times, fourteen thousand and seventeen people have been reached by our post. So, so there's been fourteen thousand opportunities for somebody to be negative to this, and they haven't. And I'm just going to put in this in parentheses, as a, as a former elected official, I'm always concerned when I get the "they," and they've asked me not to say their names. I always discount that, frankly. And I always will discount that. But we've got two hundred and forty-three people that have put their names on the fact that they liked the idea. We've got twenty-five people who have commented that they liked the idea. We have had no negative comments. So, so as a Main Street board, we're ready to move forward, but we're only going to move forward if we have the participation of the city and of the chamber. So that's what I'd like to say. I'm sorry that, you know, it's 2022. And all of the things John said about Luther are true to an extent. I did check. He's not on the Sexual Predator Register. I couldn't find any convictions for him, and I couldn't find any commitments for him using the sources that I have. So, so while there are some allegations out there, I'm just going to tend to discount them just a little bit. And I'm going to go forward saying he was a character in our community. Sometimes characters are all good, and sometimes characters aren't so good. I'll also say that if we need to make a monument to Ed Haley, or if we need to make a monument to Jean Ramsey, or if we need to make a monument to Lamar Phillips or the guys who got our flood control, who really are the bastions of this community, then that's another discussion we need to have. But that doesn't need to be included in a reason not to do this. There's a, there's a simpler explanation of why we need to do that. And that's because there were people downtown that really cared for Luther, liked Luther, and wanted to see his memory live on at least through our lifetimes. So that's where we are.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for either John or Cal?
I'll just say something here, too. I think, I know that my concern would be we're setting a precedent, and I don't know how we're going to decide this each time. We can't spend this much time. If we're going to have six people a month come forward, go, what about this person? And suddenly, we're in here discussing this more than other things we need to be talking about. So I'm concerned about a precedent here. And also, if the family wanted a bench, why are we not just honoring that? What's the need to go beyond that?
My answer to that would be very simple, Mr. Skidmore. The community reached out to us and asked us for that. I mean, this wasn't something that we concocted as downtown organizations. This was something that the community asked us to do, and fifty and a hundred dollars a time have been saying, yeah, we really want this. So, and like I say, that's without any promotion. So again, I, this isn't, this isn't something that we're, we're not trying to set a precedent here. We're trying to respond to a community request.
I'll cite this Commissioner, in addition to Cal. We've actually had one request that has, I believe, went to Main Street first, then went up to the city and came back to us. And I think they are working with the city for just similar to what you said, that their daughter passed, and they were looking.
No, John, that's not true.
Well, however.
The request has been made, but it hadn't gone anywhere.
Okay, well, I didn't mean insinuate it had gone someplace, but I think that it came back to the city then for more information. Because I, because when it came to us, and it's, when I say came, I'm always speaking of a request. When the request came to us, my immediate response was, well, that is not, we're not in our purview to respond to that. So I actually directed him at that point to a community development who could possibly help them with some rules or maybe some protocol for what that would look like. I, I don't know. When I say come to, I was simply referring to a request.
And I'd like to follow up on that a little bit. The request originally came to Main Street, and we really don't have anything to do with that. And for my other time on the city commission, on the planning commission, my recollection was that when that park was dedicated, it was dedicated and donated to the Chamber of Commerce. And at one point, I don't know whether the city actually owned that or not. I don't know who ended up on the title as owner of that. So we just referred it to both the chamber and the city. And what they wanted to do was they wanted to put a small plaque in there to memorialize their child who had loved Haley Park. It was not a big request, but, and it was inside Haley Park. We were not asking for that very reason. We were not asking for something inside Haley Park. But at some point, you guys need to determine who regulates Haley Park. If there's, that's not already done, that needs to be determined who's the regulator for Haley Park.
I'm happy it's the chamber.
It's the city. It's the city, and I've got the paper trail show.
Anyway, that's, so, so it was a longer process. And the only reason Main Street didn't get involved in that was the fact that we didn't know who owned it.
Well, Commissioners, I, I think maybe we should have a discussion and kind of, you know, if you'd like to, to kind of give Cal and John some direction. I think we're kind of talking in circles, you know, trying to figure out where we want to go. And if we kind of give them some direction, because they are putting it on city property, I believe.
It would, well, it would be in the, you know where the bench is. It'd be on the street, on the sidewalk, street side. That is city property.
And that plaque or bench would most likely, if the plaque was mounted to, the bench would be facing Main Street? Okay. I just want to make sure that everybody, you know, because that's something where if somebody pulled up, they could, they could read it. It's not something where you wouldn't see it in passing, quite. And you may not be able to, depending on how big the font is. So, so I think maybe we should have that discussion on what we think is appropriate and how we, we think they should move forward.
I will just add one little thing. We did have it, we did have it planned. It's on the chamber calendar to have an event on Luther's birthday. And the only reason I would say that the time is of the essence on this is because there's going to be a lead time in getting a bench. That's going to be the big thing. We've actually reached out to some people in Kansas to see about getting a bench manufactured, but it's still going to take them some time to get the design, do the CAD work, and get it put together. So, and that is in June, I believe, Sheri?
June eighth.
June eighth. So we do need to have some.
Sure.
Anything else for us?
Anybody want to give their opinion?
Do you want to have this conversation now?
I mean, sure. I think we, I think, you know, we could come up with an agreement amongst us four that, to give them some direction. If not, we're going to come back next week and talk about it again. So I don't think that's.
The idea of a buddy bench, if you're not aware of the concept, actually began in schools, and it was designed so that, to promote inclusion and to not, and to eliminate loneliness and to foster friendships. And that, a buddy bench is, the idea around a buddy bench is that if you feel lonely or you feel, you don't feel apart, you would sit on the buddy bench and someone would know. You know, you signal that you need or want to talk to someone. And so the idea is to really, to make buddies, not bullies, not bully someone. And I dare say that Luther probably was bullied a lot, sadly. But on the flip side, I want to be really sensitive to the fact that if someone felt victimized, that, I don't want to victim shame them by any means. And generally, people aren't going to make accusations and put themselves out there if they don't feel as though they've been, they've been treated wrong. And I'm sorry for that. That is absolutely horrible. I dare say that lots of us in this room, and probably lots of us that have listened, have been bullied before, too, and that Luther was just one of several people, if not several hundreds of people that have been bullied before. And so the concept of the buddy bench is really to help stop bullying, to help create inclusion, and to, to help foster friendships and eliminate some of the loneliness that individuals have in our community and at large. So just a concept, when we think about buddy bench and the concept of it, I still love the concept of the buddy bench. I recognize that it may come with some consternation if it's in recognition of Luther, but I still think in our community, we need more buddies and less bullies. And so I'm not sure how that looks. I would never claim to know absolutely everything about this or to know absolutely which way we should go, but I still am in favor of having more buddies and less bullies.
And I think, you know, kind of similar, I'd be in favor of some sort of middle ground to where there is a bench, but maybe the bench represents a larger picture of anyone who's suffered with mental health issues or, you know, whatever that might look like, rather than a specific individual. I, I do understand how it would be awful if you've been a victim of something to ride around and see a bench dedicated to someone that, you know, you feel like has hurt you. And that, that would not be great, but maybe if it was in recognition overall of mental health issues.
I'm falling the same way. I think the bench idea, I like that. Simply also beyond what the purpose of the bench, what you described very well, was that you would see him sitting on a bench a lot of times downtown. And so it was kind of a mainstay. You'd see him sitting on a bench waving the cars go by. And so I'm kind of thinking, I like that idea of a buddy bench myself. And I don't know how much time we've got to get that put together. I think that's good, good time frame. I understand that. But that'd be my preference. I think it's kind of a good compromise.
I, too, you know, I agree with the buddy bench. And I also agree with, if, with Main Street or the chamber's willing to do some sort of plaque for, you know, mentally challenged or, you know, individuals, you know, for, for something like that, instead of specifically calling out one person individually. And that's why I asked if you could read it, because, you know, you may, somebody may pull up to that stop, you know, stoplight and read that name, and it may trigger. And unfortunately, I understand Cal, what you're saying. We can't make everybody happy, you know, happy nowadays. But we certainly want to tread lightly, because those are egregious accusations. So I, I, I'm in favor of the buddy bench in a plaque, if somebody's willing to. And then if somebody wants to specifically call out, you know, Luther, you know, recognize Luther themselves, then they can do that at their personal business, you know, and take that, any repercussions that might come from that. Yes, sir.
What I would tell you, Commissioners, just as matter of background for you, we do have a naming policy. We have a naming resolution. If somebody were wanting to name a piece of ground, wanted them to name out somebody, you have to sign off on it. There's a whole process. There is not a naming. There is not a memorial policy that we found about what you do for memorials on the city property, particularly in parks. So there are a number of cities that allow memorials on their benches, actually use it as a, well, anyway, there are a number of cities that allow that. So I think that's probably a pretty good middle ground, also.
I just want to say at this point, I'm not a hundred percent what my board is going to support, because I told them I'd bring this back to the board discussion. And Mr. Skidmore, you heard the discussion, so you're kind of familiar. I did have several reach out to me after the discussion via email and said they could support Luther's name in some small way, like a plaque on the bench, but they did not want to see a big memorial to Luther. But they do support what's more or less been discussed here, I think, more or less what's been discussed here.
And I can see somewhere, he may be in the, in the verbiage, just saying something like Luther's name and others suffering with his, whatever issues he had.
And you're right.
You could mention his name somewhere in the plaque somewhere, but it would also serve the purpose of many others out there that suffer in the same capacity.
I mean, even if we say many knew Luther Coke in this community and the troubles that he's experienced. You know, I.
You could say it in a subtle way that would not, I don't think offend people, but I wasn't affected by it indirectly.
I mean, even a statement such as, you know, promoting inclusion of all Ottawa citizens.
Just to add, what we originally looked at was a plaque. What we found when we went to price a plaque was, we found somebody that said, we will give you a stone. Instead of paying seven hundred dollars for a plaque, we'll give you a thirteen hundred dollar stone. So that's, that's the reason we went in that direction. I, I don't think we would have any, I don't think any of us that have organized this would have any hesitation at all to say, as long as we could say, you know, have, and I don't know where we would get the quote. I don't know what the quote would be. We might have opened it to the community to ask for quotes on somebody, something about people or base mental challengers or mental health, something like that, and then just put on there, paid for or donated by the Luther Coke Memorial Fund. I mean, to me, that, if you want to compromise, that would be, I think, hearing what I'm hearing, that would be the best way to do it. And I don't think the people that I've talked to, and I'll ask Sheri to, I don't see anybody would have any problem with that. Do you?
I don't. I think as long as his name is associated with it in some way, whether it's like what you said, Luther Coke Memorial Foundation or whatever. I think, because the people that have donated are donating Luther, I think the name needs to be mentioned somewhere.
The challenge for us would just be to raise more money so we can pay for a plaque to go along with the bench.
However, I did receive a call from a gentleman that they're with a motorcycle organization here in Ottawa. It's a D plus motorcycle organization, and they said that they are willing to donate what funds are needed that are not raised to make this happen. And so, you know, we have that as well.
Well, I think what we're, we're hearing is the Commissioners all kind of agree with, you know, some sort of buddy bench and some sort of plaque. I'm assuming that we'd probably want to review that plaque before it was moved forward. So if you can kind of get something written up, let us review it and then, you know, certainly move forward on that. But I think you have some sort of direction now, at least.
I appreciate that. I'll probably also include Leslie Bork in the conversation. It's somebody who, and probably will visit again with Adam Wine Gardner, too, regarding this, because I know there are people that deal with that on a daily basis. And so I appreciate, appreciate you having a conversation. It certainly seemed harmless to me when we began and seemed like a good way to recognize somebody that we viewed in a way as harmless, but now recognize, not everybody has those same feelings. And we don't want to be as several of you said very clearly. We don't want to be something that creates a harbinger for somebody to just continue to feel upset when they see it. So, thank you.
I don't want to belittle any accusations, but there's good things and bad things about living in the same community for a long period of time. You know, you can certainly anger some people, and they may hold a grudge for whatever reason. But you certainly make a lot of good people, you know, good friends, too.
Yeah. And I think that, at the end of the day, good people understand situations. And not, not that anybody's a bad person for what they've experienced. It's just. It's just that I think people that have had a lot of mental challenges and recognize their mental challenges deserve credit for what they are challenged with on a daily basis.
And just, I, I just want to throw this out there too. As somebody who's been around the downtown for a long time. I had my first office 31 years ago in the downtown area. This memorial, although it's going to be, it's going to mention Luther's name, it's more important to all of the people in this community that reached out and helped him. He, he never had a day when he didn't get a meal. He never had a hot day when he didn't get a bottle of water from somebody. This town really took care of somebody that was incapable of taking care of himself. And I, I think that's why we're having this discussion right now. It's not so much about one person. It is about the philosophy of a community to reach out to somebody in times when, maybe some of the times we shouldn't have been reaching out, but we still were. We still were making sure that our community people were taken care of. So anyway, thank you guys for your time. We're going to go ahead and order the bench, if I think, or at least get the bench started. And then we can work on the plaque, how it's going to go on, what it's going to say, and bring that back to you.
Well, I'm glad you made that point because I think, you know, that might remind the public that when the next Luther comes along, that we certainly try our best to try to include the mental community as much as possible.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
And make sure that we get the wording to your board through Richard. And then if you want to have more discussion about that, we're certainly going to do that.
Appreciate it, John. Appreciate it, Cal. Thank you. That moves us on to the continued discussion of the resolution approving the final plat of the Markley addition. And I know, Richard, you're going to talk about it a little bit. Is Jennifer going to do it?
I think only, I think only, excuse me, if you have some technical questions. So here's where we're at. There are two parts of this. There is a final plat with the easements right away is public. You know what a final plat is. And there's a development agreement. And in normal circumstances, the development agreement comes after the final plat. So it's with the lawyers, all right? I talked to our city attorney. Our city attorney has been trying to have a discussion with Sean. I actually had an email conversation with Sean. And he said he hadn't heard from his attorney also. So I talked to both Darby and Jennifer. If they knew of any reason why we just couldn't go ahead and move the final plat to Wednesday, so you can consider approving it. And both of them said, no, they did not know any reason why. And hopefully we'll have the development agreement worked out by next Monday.
I like that idea. I think it's good.
My only concern, sorry, sir. My only concern with that would be that Sean came to us last week with a last minute kind of, you know, here, I want to change this up. And as long as, I'm just concerned that he might come up with, or they might, even his lawyer might say, no, we don't agree with that wordage. We want to change it a little bit. And then we're approving something that's.
I don't think, I don't think that'll affect the final plat. And I think.
Well, I'm talking about the development agreement.
Well, I, I'm not suggesting you approve the development agreement.
Okay.
I'm suggesting you just move on to final plat. And you understand that we're going to look at the development agreement when we can get the changes back from the lawyers.
Could the, could changes in the development agreement change the format or the even how the plat looks?
I don't believe.
I, I can, I can take that. Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. This is Jennifer Reinhardt, planner assisting the city. And so in response to your question, no. If you approve the final plat in form, that is what will stand. The items that are being confirmed with the developer agreement will not impact the, the makeup of the final plat that's before you today for decision.
Well, then Jennifer, the only, and Richard, you might answer. It's the only, the only thing Sean wanted changed was just an agreement on how the funds were kept, right, for what sidewalks or whatever. It wasn't like, he wasn't willing to pay for.
It was whether we were going, no, he's willing to pay, but it depends upon the method.
Sure.
It was either 125% of the value, which would be cash deposited with the city, or it would be with an irrevocable letter of credit.
Right.
Which I've always been kind of surprised that developers haven't asked for that anyway. So, but that's what's being worked out with the attorneys.
But at this point, you're only asking that we move the final plat to Wednesday.
That's all I'm suggesting to you.
I'm fine with moving the final plat. No movement on the development agreement.
I agree with that. Yeah, we're, I think we're in consensus to move the final plat to Wednesday evening. Wednesday morning.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer.
All right. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
All right. That moves us on to the continued discussion on termination of the redevelopment agreement for the Coves. Tyler, are you available? Hello?
I am. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Tyler Ellsworth with Q-TAC Rock Cities Bond Council. Mayor, as you just mentioned, this is a continuation of a discussion that began at last week's study session. And it is in connection with a redevelopment agreement that the city entered in 2008 in connection with faith codes. So just by way of background, you know, everybody is aware that the city recently auctioned off several of the properties in the Coves so that those properties could be returned to productive use and developed with new homes. And in the course of that, that sale, some of those sales by the land bank was approached by one of the purchasers of those properties. And the purchaser said, hey, I see in my title search for title insurance that there's this existing redevelopment agreement from 2008 that's still recorded against the property. Can you tell me about that? How does that impact things? And so that's really how this came to light. I've discussed with Richard and Blaine. And we've looked at sort of the pros and cons to, do we leave this agreement in place? Terminate it now formally? And after taking a look at this, my, my recommendation is that we do forward with terminating this development agreement and then releasing it from the real property records so that in the future, when property is sold or when somebody goes to get a loan and gets title insurance, that disagreement no longer shows up on their property records. At our discussion last week, Commissioner Skidmore asked whether this document constituted an encumbrance against the properties. I don't know that I would refer to it as an encumbrance. It's really more of kind of a loose end. It's not something that necessarily in its own right impedes development. But I think there are a few reasons why it makes sense to proceed with formally terminating the agreement and releasing this, this property. And, and those reasons are really twofold. One is if you don't release this development agreement, if you don't terminate this development agreement and you have limited ability to use the property tax increment from phase one of the Coves in the larger K-68 Tiff district, which is larger than just phase one of the Coves. So terminating the agreement would give you the ability to use the property tax increment elsewhere. The other reason that I think it makes sense to go through the steps to formally terminate this agreement is because I've seen at least one other instance where a developer reemerges after being absent for years and makes a demand on a city for reimbursement or reinstatement of the agreement or something along those lines. I think you're in a very good legal position now. If somebody were to do that, to say, no, you abandoned the project. You failed to perform or not doing this. But I think you're in an even better position if we take the steps now to provide notice to the addresses in the existing agreement and go through the process of formally terminating this and then formally releasing it. So why don't I pause there before an explanation of where I think we go from here? Are there any questions on anything we've covered so far?
Tyler, this is Sarah Kaler. The agreement has been made with, is it Meritazine Overlook? Or who, who is the agreement actually with?
That's, that's exactly right. Meritazine Overlook LLC. That's an LLC that actually forfeited their limited liability company status with. But that LLC no longer exists. Cancelled.
So because the agreement lends it to say that there's an agreement with 22 different parties, because that party doesn't exist, we have the right to terminate the agreement. Is that right?
That's right. And that, that fact isn't spelled out in black and white in the documents. But there is a very black and white provision that I would look to if we want to terminate this. And that is Meritazine Overlook LLC was required to build approximately 37,000 square feet of residential construction by 2016. That's a very clear black and white objective that they failed to meet. And as a result, the city can terminate the development agreement with 30 days' notice.
That's my only question. I didn't memorize all 88 pages that you sent us, but I know that Mayor Crowley did. So. Well, 80 or eight.
If we're not doing it any good right now, it's kind of a moot point to continue on. Isn't that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. It's not, it's not doing anything for you currently.
So I, I think we're good just to terminate it myself.
I think, I think with that.
This would be on the whole Coves, right? We just do one?
Yes, yes. And I have to check with the register of deeds to see if they can tell me exactly what property this is recorded against. It may be just a piece of the property or it may be all 55 lots. And it may be that if we can't tell that clearly, and we may not be able to, that we just file the release against the entire Tiff district or against the entire Tiff project area and just be done with it. So my suggestion, if, if it works for you all, my suggestion is that we place this item for consideration on Wednesday's regular meeting this week. I don't have like a formal resolution for you to consider at that time, but you can formally, I would recommend that somebody make a motion to direct me and staff to send a notice of default to the developer under the agreement. I would go ahead and do that following Wednesday's meeting in your direction to do so. We would let 30 days run and then at your April 20th commission, I would come back before you provide any update. If we hear from the developer, the developer's attorney, I can certainly update you between now and then. But assuming that we don't hear anything, which is, which is likely to be the case, at your April 20th meeting, then you would consider a resolution formally terminating the agreement and authorizing the release to be ordered against the property.
Commissioners, are you okay with moving this on to Wednesday's agenda for the motion as Tyler described? Tyler, I appreciate your explanation last week when we had this discussion. And I had, I had Richard ask you those questions. It, to me, if it was important enough for us to bring it on our agenda, it was important enough to kind of explain it a little bit more so the public understood why we were terminating this agreement. So I certainly appreciate the explanation that you gave tonight on, on our discussion.
Good. Very good.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any additional questions, but it sounds like we're in good shape to have did it on Wednesday.
I think you're right, Tyler. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
All right. That moves us on to item four, which is our continued discussion of the Cedar Street Stormwater Project, which Dennis, I believe, will be discussing with us again. And I believe Casey Colburn is on Zoom if everybody, if anybody has any questions for either one of them. Hello again, Dennis.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I think you received an email from our city manager this afternoon. And if not, I do have some paper copies of some, I'm going to call it explanation of the conversation that we had last Monday. I think there was a bit of a misconception and created by us that, that the whole increase in cost of this project was, was the mill or not the mill, but the widening of the road. And so what we did is we went back and, and tried through, through the document that was, that is in front of you there to do a little better explanation of, of exactly where those costs lay. And so with that said, I am going to bow to Mr. Colburn to walk through that.
Thank you, Dennis. And I have it on my screen if you guys would like me to share it or are you guys, or does everybody have it in front of them?
Could you share it please, Casey?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Are you all, is everybody seeing a PDF?
Yes.
Okay. So after our meeting last week, Dennis and Richard asked me to kind of go through. And we started breaking down the costs of where the costs were changing and what, you know, since there was more than just street widening added to this. So I would, so what I did was the initial part at the bottom, that's, that's what you guys saw last week with the subtotal, the contingency, and then the engineering design, public involvement, construction observation slash inspection. That's the not to exceed amount of, of our contract. And that's where you get the 925, 230. So what we went through and, so the original design without any additional changes, if you go through and break that out, that's 408,239. That's all the cells that are not highlighted. That's just the, the stormwater work and whatnot. So the street widening itself is 67,400. If you look, those are the yellow cells. So that includes additional pavement, additional rock mainly, that, you know, a little, there's a little demo in there, but nothing to change the amount. So pretty much all the work we're doing, the initial design was cutting out the curb and gutter, putting in new curb and gutter, and then putting in storm sewer behind it. With the widening, we're still cutting out the curb and gutter. What we're doing though is putting a section of rock and full depth asphalt there. So there is some rework, but that's, you know, that's the main quantity there is just about three feet of asphalt, rock in the earthwork for it. You're still going to have the same amount of curb and gutter. You're still going to have the same amount of storm sewer, since there's no storms who are out there. Excuse me. Since there's not a lot of storms who are out there, it's not that it's all, you know, we have to move and shift a bunch of things. So and then you look at the next thing is the mill and overlay. The mill and overlay was not in the original design estimate, not in the original project. It was added on later. So that is 140,000 of the, you know, the change there is to mill and overlay pretty much from 13th all the way to 15th. Now, that mill and overlay is only for the original with the street between the curb and gutter because the additional three feet, it will be full depth asphalt pavement. And then the last part in there is 13th Street. So 13th was added on later is because we were going to stop on the south side, the south curb return of 13th Street. Then it was asked, well, we're, we're there. Is it better to do the ADA ramps, the curb and gutter and the intersection, repave it to, and then have a place to start, you know, with the next phase of the project, whatever that might be. So we broke that cost out and that was the 36,735. So the additional costs in itself were the street widening, mill and overlay and 13th and Cedar. So that's really what added up to the difference in the cost there. So yeah, like I said, it just was not all street widening. And the street widening was, I think, we're, because we're at 240,000 or whatever. So the street widening was about 25%, a little more than that, of the actual additional cost there. Is that, is this a little bit more clear of the changes that were being made and what, you know, some of the conversations that were had after last week?
Yeah, I believe it is. Commissioners, do you have any questions for either Casey or Dennis?
I guess the widening, with that, the design or the purpose for that is just to be consistent with the rest of Cedar where the, where the new has been, right, what, eighth and between, where. Where the, where the new has been, right, what, eighth and between, where is it? Between eight and nine?
Most of, most of the widening actually took place between first and fifth streets. Uh, the, the, some of the streets that, that we have done since then have not been widened. And, and quite, quite, I don't know that there was any need for those streets to be widened. Uh, as we talked about last week, we are in an area between thirteenth and fifteenth that is one of the higher traffic areas in our community. Uh, we have, uh, traffic out of, uh, out of the hospital that sits right there. We also have emergency vehicles that, uh, that exit on to Cedar right there. This really was driven more from a safety aspect than it was any kind of, you know, quite honestly. I guess roads can be pretty, but that's not our concern, is for roads to be pretty. You know, our roads are to be functional and safe, and, uh, so that's what we look at as, as we looked at this project. From, quite honestly, from, uh, eleventh street to thirteen, there probably is not a lot of need for widening at that point in time. But from ninth to eleventh street, we're probably back talking about widening that street out. You know, so, so we, we've looked at each section as we go to, to determine if there's a need or not.
So the history of Cedar Street is that originally the city received a now-defunct KDOT grant program to do the first portion of Cedar Street. And it was actually designed all the way down to fifteenth street. Okay, it's actually designed for that, but they only received money for the first part. And the city decided that they would wait for money on the second part instead of issuing bonds and doing all the Cedar Street at the same time. However, that program went away with KDOT, and there's been a number of, of, uh, uh, different changes in how KDOT, um, it allocates that money. And, uh, the most current iteration is the Federal Exchange Program.
So Casey, can you, can you, can, how, how much wider are we going with the street? Because I've heard two different numbers now.
Um, the existing street is approximately thirty-one feet in width. And we, uh, have shown it, the, the initial discussion was going to thirty-four feet. Um, is what we are going off of what the, uh, the other design was, um, further down in the street. Um, so we were thinking, and so you get out there in the, um, thirty-one feet is give and take through there. Um, if you go look at that curb, it's not perfectly straight. Um, there's stuff that's been replaced, so, but the, the plan is to get to thirty-four foot wide, back a curb to back a curb, so. You do that, you separate, you take out two feet of your curbing gutter, so your pavement will actually be thirty feet in width.
And I might also remember, re- remind everyone, this is a storm sewer project, right? And when we get done, it's part of the whole drainage in this part of town. And by doing thirteenth and fourteenth street intersections, you all know what happens when it rains, those intersections. The public should be able to notice a difference about the drainage and, um, especially those using those intersections won't have to put life jackets on their cars.
So, um, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, one thing, um, when we design these projects, you design the stormwater to contain the ten-year event, and then the pipes to, to contain the ten-year event. Anything over the ten-year event per standard is to flow within the right-of-way. Uh, so it uses the street to convey the storm. Um, and the design standard is you, you have to leave at least one lane of traffic open when the street floods, and you know, your, um, gully washer, yeah, event types. With this being, uh, the, one of the additional benefits widening the street here with this being emergency use, things like that, that if you widen it, if the street does flood during a large event, there's just more room for emergency vehicles to, um, get out that will not be driving in the flooded, you know, exterior of the road, which when I say that, it's pretty much from the back of curb in approximately eight to ten feet on each side. It's kind of the center lanes open, so it gives them a little bit more room. Um, just to have and widen it out. Also with this, with the hospital deliveries, school buses, things like that. Um, and it being such a busy intersection or busy street, having a little bit wider eases up the, we don't have to have as big of radi- radii around those, um, intersections um, to get the buses, trucks, everything out, um, into the street itself. We have kind of a arterial-type street in the middle of a neighborhood slash commercial district with the hospital. So we're trying to work through that, and having a little bit widening there, um, just gives a little bit, you know, safer in that area.
I think it's parking on one side. I think it's on the west side, so I guess widening this will allow more, a little more comfortable spacing between cars meeting each other.
Kind of be nice if there were no parking. We, we get a lot of, especially over around the university. We get a number of comments during the week. People leave their names. We get a number of comments of people who are navigating through their, um, dur- during times of high traffic and parking on the street.
Why, why was Mill and Overlay not included on the original, um, design, but now it is?
It was not included, or sorry, Di- Dennis was not part of the original design. Mike was, uh, um, Mike led that. Um, we didn't include it, we just, was just a straight, it was the first part of the design was the original stormwater projects. Um, so we did not know if the funding was gonna be there. We did Ash Street because we had additional, or the bids came in, there was funding there, so we Mill and overlaid it. I think everybody saw the end product of Ash Street of, hey, it's not a totally brand-new street, but it, it fixed a lot of the potholes, things like that, and really helped with the stormwater that you actually had. It, uh, places, uh, that weren't bird baths that were collecting water is actually getting in the curbs and gutter. So the city was, hey, we probably should try to include this in this design and try, you know, uh, to set a precedent of if we can do it, um, it's also something that's very easy to remove from scope if we bid the project. And hey, we don't have enough money in there, we can remove that as an alternate pretty easily.
So on this new breakdown that you showed us a little bit ago, did we, Dennis, did we, did you have any input on the numbers in there? Or was this just straight from Bartlett and West?
Yeah, the, what we're looking at here was straight from Bartlett and West.
And, and the reason I'm asking is because I hope, I'm looking at our street rehab rehab thing that we just approved, and we did. It's, I, and I know it's just a, a, a quote at this point, but the same amount of area on thirteenth to fifteenth and Elm is half the price of what they have on here, so what I'm hoping is that we can get closer to that number.
Keep in mind, Commissioner, was chip and seal.
That's, I'm looking at the Mill and Overlay of thirteenth to fifteenth.
There were just two projects. Oh.
Yeah, thirteen to fifteenth on Elm was, was, was the same square yardage, um, just half the price of what Bartlett and West had on it.
I will say that this is a little bit conservative because the price of oil, if this bids, you know, late fall, we have some contingency in there, but, um, we've talked about this, that we're seeing unprecedented um, change in costs, and so this is, I will say, this is a conservative number. Um, but we did base it on, when we updated these cost assessments this year, uh, we just had bid two projects in twenty-twenty-one in Topeka that were rehab-type projects. Um, so the Mill and Overlay number is pretty conservative. The rest of the numbers in there are pretty much in line with what we're seeing. I did reach out to contractors to ask kind of some pricing on pipe, um, and some other things with that, just to see where we are. It's just that anything, um, that has to do with an oil or oil byproducts in it right now, so your HDPE pipe, um, things like that, uh, on the last project, HDPE was much cheaper than concrete pipe. This project, there's a good chance that concrete pipe's gonna be cheaper than HDPE or more readily available. Um, so those are some of the, the things that we're seeing right now. Um, we can, you know, I could, I think we have two or three asphalt, uh, Mill and Overlay people there in Ottawa. We can, uh, update the estimate and kind of ask them, uh, what that number is, uh, they're seeing right now. Um, but most of them probably won't guarantee it for, uh, too long. Um, so we are trying to be conservative on this, just for what we're seeing right now.
Sure.
And Mayor and Commissioners, I might also add, on the street rehab program, we have not received bids back. I'm not even sure we put it out yet. But we may, we, we may very well be restructuring that program when we get those bids and medals back.
Yeah, and that was part of the reason we left some room in that, in that rehab money. And to your question, Commissioner, I think if you look at, uh, at the, the widening total that's, that's on the thirteen to fifteen project, you see that a big chunk of the, of, of that is what has driven the, the Mill and Overlay difference in, in, uh, the, the two different streets that you're looking at.
And I, I, I know this is kind of a vague question, you may not be able to answer at this point, but while if this project moves forward, is there anything else we'd be doing during that project that we would be obstructing their lawns, uh, those individuals' lawns that we might be doing, uh, in conjunction with, uh, this project?
Very likely. Uh, thirteenth to fifteenth is a street that, uh, that needs new water line. And we would likely, while we're tearing things up, we would likely try to get new water line in. Uh, we have replaced the, the water line in the sec- intersection at fourteenth street. But we need to go both ways to finish that out, so very likely we would be doing.
And Dennis, that should be, it should be mentioned that that is not included in this estimate because that is city work.
And thank you for getting that, Casey, uh, um, for, for explaining that. The only reason I brought that up is because I want the public to understand that we may be in there doing some work on their yards, but really kind of really protruding into their, their, their yards because of other work that may be going on.
Yeah, and, uh, Mayor, great point, because with this project, if it does move forward, um, what happens is the util, there will be some utility work, because we will, um, the first step after this, if this project moves forward and it receives approval, is, um, we will send, uh, drawings out to the utility companies, and we will have a sit-down page turn with them to go through it, to look at conflicts. And then the city will notify them that they have, you know, um, so mu- amount of time to move their utilities. Mainly, there's probably some gas lines, um, communication lines, and then working with the city on the water. And, uh, um, there's like one or two electrical poles that are gonna have to get offset through there. Um, and the, the electrical poles, we're gonna have to come out, uh, whether you widen the road or not, um, because they were gonna be going through the dead center of a, a storm sewer pipe, and the radius, uh, of one of the corners. So the utility work gets done first. Um, and that's where some of the yards start, get torn up, they get replaced, seeded, whatnot, and then the contractor comes in uh, and actually starts the road work. Um, so there will be work going on in the right-of-way. Uh, the main goal of this is, is to have all the work within the right-of-way, which is within the side, the back of the sidewalk in.
And I would say also, to that point, we've had a number of conversations with not only people in that block, but also people, especially about a block to the east of there, about how water floods their yards, and, you know, they have problems with water in their basements and that type of thing. Absolutely, the hope is, by what we're doing here, is that we eliminate some of those problems. And I guess why I say that is, I believe there will be a, a level of understanding with the public that it takes making a mess before you can clean things up and, and make things better, and, and so, uh, you know, I think we'll get support from the public on this type of project. Nobody likes to be torn up, but it's what it takes to get it done.
Well, I don't know who'd ask this question of, but, uh, are, are we talking about closing the street down completely? And if we do, would the project have fewer working days, or will we have a lane open?
It's something that we'd probably have to work through the contractor with to maintain access. Um, I believe on Ash, you know, fifteenth street, we kept, we kept open. Ash Street, the contractor was, hey, we can get out of here a lot quicker if we can shut down a block at a time. With that, though, is, you know, do you want to detour people up to Mulberry, or, you know, out to Main, how do we do that? But doing a full width, you know, curbing gutter on both sides, um, it's this kind of a safety thing of, you have to move, you know, if you don't keep, if you keep it open, you kind of have to do it a little piece at a time, because you can't have pipe on both sides of the street, because then you, you have to be crossing live traffic with pipe on a, you know, on a skid steer or something like that, which you can't do that. Um, so, uh, there are, um, uh, pros and cons to each, but it will be a lot quicker project if they can do, um, both sides of the work at once. Whether it's widening is included or not.
And would the people have to park off-street somewhere and walk to their cars each day?
On Ash Street, we've maintained access except for when their driveway was redone. The, that Kilos, uh, Kilo Construction did that project, and they did a great job of notifying neighbors, working with neighbors. And we put that on them, that that was their responsibility. Um, and so they worked really well with the neighbors, trying to make sure that they knew when they would be at their driveway. Um, and then, you know, tried to make it quick, uh, of getting the pipe in, and then just maybe putting rock down, but then letting them know when they were doing curb or, um, their actual driveway. Um, so they knew to either get their car out, um, and, you know, they wouldn't have access to it for a day or so.
Commissioners, any other questions for Casey or Dennis? Are you okay with moving this, uh, on to, uh, Wednesday's agenda?
That is what we would like to do, Mayor, and, uh, hopefully we can make a decision one way or the other.
That's what we'll do. We'll move it on to Wednesday's agenda. Casey, thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very much, and if any questions come up before then, please reach out to Dennis or myself. Be more than happy to chat about it.
We will. Thank you. That moves us on to comments by our city manager.
And just as a reminder, Commissioners, on a project like this, you have at least two more points where you can say, no, we're not moving forward. Just because you say on Wednesday, let's put this out the bid, um, you'll have an opportunity to review the bids when they come in and to make adjustments if you need to do that. So you have at least one other point before we get to the point of asking you to approve a contract with whoever the contractor might be. Um, the only thing I have is I will not be here Wednesday. I'll be out of town at a funeral. Uh, Director of Finance, Landis, will be sitting in my seat over here, so she will apely guide you through the meeting.
That's it.
Um, this is on, uh, comments by our city Commissioners, Commissioner Grace.
The Ottawa Main Street, um, board meeting was canceled for tonight, so I have a free evening. So, um, and then Ottawa Municipal Auditorium's tomorrow. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Carolyn?
I am busy filling out my, um, my bracket, my basketball bracket. And I, I really want to support all of the Big Twelve teams, and I'm just wondering if Commissioner Skidmore could let me know, when is K-State's game?
Next year.
Oh, okay, sure. I didn't want to miss it, because I'm trying to support all of the Big Twelve teams, so, okay.
Mayor, Ken Skidmore, you got any comeback?
Well, I do. I, the livestock judging is this next weekend. I don't know where the KU team is. They didn't show up. They got twelve out of ten teams. I don't know how they did that, but, okay. I just have a question, City Manager, just out on the applications for the commission seat to be filled, you know, you say who it was, but do we have the number of applications? And when's the deadline again?
Uh, the deadline was today at four. Uh, you have four applications that we know, and last week I told, uh, um, I had Laura contact and started setting up interviews for you next month. next Monday.
Next Monday. Okay, very good. Thanks.
I have no comments, so we'll move on to the announcements. We have a regular meeting at ten AM on Wednesday, and we have a study session next Monday at four PM here. And we have a joint meeting with the county and the school district at noon, hosted by the county. Anything else coming for us? If not, I will adjourn.